I'm calling to all of this meeting of the Silver City Town Council. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. First item on the agenda, require an action, is changes to the agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no changes. The next item is council comments. Councilor Amen Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first comment is I went to the library and saw the new mural that was being installed, and I encourage everyone to go do that. It is spectacular and beautiful. I got to actually be there a little bit when the kids were working on it, and I just am so proud of those kids and of our own Diana and Goflybe and all of the work that everyone does there. And then the only other announcement I have, and I believe that we're going to have a little more discussion about this later, is that please block out your calendars for August 4th. We are going to have the Territorial Charter Volunteer Day for District 2 on August 4th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And what we're going to do is a pilot project of what's called a Play Street, something that's really been bringing a lot of traction in urban and community planning and development curriculums and partners to across the United States. And so I want to invite all of you to come to District 2 and participate. You can sign us volunteer by contacting the Community Development Department in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Resolutions Committee of the New Mexico Municipal League met this past Saturday, and Manager Brown was in attendance. And we've got a great crop of resolutions. Some of them are reissued from previous years, but things that will, we hope, will make a difference in the lives of our citizens and our residents. The first, this was the first meeting. The second meeting is during the annual conference. And then the third discussion about different resolutions that we want to bring forward with different legislators will occur at the annual business meeting. And then there's one more little stop before we go further. There's still the Board of, the Board of the New Mexico Municipal League has to then prioritize which ones we want to make sure that we somehow get someone, our staff, make sure that they get someone, not the staff here at the town, but at the municipal league, carries some, some really important legislation that we will be doing. And at some point, that legislation and the resolutions and their priority will be placed on the municipal league website for anyone to see. And we'll all get caught, so, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Connor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things. The first thing is I got to be a volunteer for the Silver City Wine Fest that happened a couple of weekends ago, and I would just like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, the Executive Director Scott Terry is here, and the Board of the Chamber of Commerce for all their hard work on putting on that event. I think it's something that everyone who went really enjoyed, and I'm hoping that it will continue to be a tradition of Silver City. It's something that was very, very good. And the other thing is I wanted to congratulate Councilor Edison on the, I guess they were calling it a soft opening, but not really, it was just kind of a preview of the WME Museum. That building looks incredible, and I know that you've been working very, very, very hard on that. And I know that the people that were there, there were several that were brand new to the area and just absolutely were amazed by the jewel that we have in Silver City. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Thank you. Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing to remind the Silver City Downtown merchants that there has to be a four-foot clearance in the sidewalk for people to walk by, and there are some merchants that don't abide by that rule. And also, one more thing, I would like to see more senior people go eat at the senior citizens. Mr. Fisher, you can qualify for it. Anyway, I would like to see more people go, go in there. It's something that's treasured. It's a, it's a good meal for two bucks, so enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the councilor? Councilman? Okay, I just had a couple of quick comments. One, I'd like to thank all of those who worked with the Clay Festival, all of the volunteers that helped to make that a successful event. And next, speaking of Territorial Charter Work Day coming up, next February, we will be again celebrating our territorial charter with a celebration. And so I'm forming a committee now, and if anyone is interested in serving on that committee, please contact the city clerk, Ann Mackey, and let her know. If anyone wants to volunteer tonight, I'll be glad to take volunteers for that, too. Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of the July 10th, 2018 regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of July 10th, 2018.
Is there a second? Councilor Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. I second the motion as stated.
The motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Appel is nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda was public input, but no one signed up, so we'll go directly to reports. And the first report is a quarterly report on the real estate market by Sissy McAndrew, who is president of the Silver City Regional Association of Realtors. Sissy?
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here again. And you received some information, I believe, and I'd just like to kind of go over that and help you understand it, at least look at it the way I look at it. And we actually have a combination of two reports. The one that is in black and white, which is the month-end report, is actually generated by Kim Clark, our executive director at our regional office. So these are the statistics that come directly from our MLS. And when I spoke with you last quarter, I mentioned to you that 2017 was the best we've had since 2007, and we are continuing to be very, very busy. One thing that's really impressive to see down here is when we look at the listings that have closed, and we're looking at the year-to-date, our numbers are actually pretty close as far as the number of properties that are closing. But what we see is we're actually seeing an increase in the cost or in the sales price of the property. So this is really good. We went from an average list price of $137, $757 last year, up to $158, $541. So the value of the homes, the money that we are starting to sell our properties at has increased. And we're seeing people that are coming, they are pre-qualified because it's becoming a competitive market. I'll talk in a minute about the number of properties that are out there. We're seeing people coming with cash, which is absolutely wonderful. We have a lot of homes that it's old or housing stock. Since 2007, we've had very few new homes built. Most of those were actually custom homes, and those don't come back on the market. People are happy, they're staying in those. So we're, we're working with existing housing stock. One of our challenges with that is that as we go through, we get a property under contract, and then we have a home inspection, and then we start finding their problems, everything, some of the major problems like roofs and fascia and paint, and that comes because of our climate. It comes because it's dry, comes because we've got a lot of ultraviolet. And so when those things get called out, we normally will come back to resolve that and we'll say, okay, well, homeowner, we want you to fix that. Or we want you to credit us, the buyer at closing, so they can make those repairs. One of the challenges that we're having is we can't get contractors out to give us bids. And it's kind of trickling through the entire market. I've spoken to the Home Builders Association, and so I'd encourage that we, we try to start bringing some people in with the trades so that we can continue to not only keep our existing housing stock ready, but we're starting to have more land sales, and there are people that want to build. And so I contacted builders, and I got only three that actually even want to bid on a new home. And the reason for that is, is the price of all the building materials has gone up. And when somebody finds out how much it costs to build a home, they'll say, thanks, but no thanks, I'll go find something existing. And meanwhile, the contractor has spent hours on coming up with bids. So somehow, we need to try to figure out how to resolve this. Another thing, just like this today outside, I'm dressed in my normal attire, which is a sunscreen shirt and a nice pair of shorts and my hiking shoes. It is extremely hot. It is extremely humid. And when we see that, not only do we see a reduction in tourism, but we see a reduction in people that are up looking for homes. So people, the internet is a huge thing now. They'll sit and watch the temperature at Silver City, and when we get back to a nice, mild, comfortable, we see the amount of showings go up. So this last month has actually been rather slow as far as showings. And that will reduce, we'll see next month, sales will be a little bit lower because we didn't have as many people making offers. We're still in a very, very good position. We have over 65 properties under contract right now. Another thing that this is doing, and you know I'm an environmentalist and I'm an energy conservation expert, and I always used to praise evaporative cooling. These last few days, it's kind of pushing it. As soon as we get above 40% humidity, evaporative coolers really don't work. They just pump more humidity in, and you're totally uncomfortable. So I think we're going to see more air conditioners installed. This again can cause some problems because you have people that are licensed to install air conditioners, but not service them. So we really need to start looking at some of these impacts and what we can do to really be a full-service community. When we look at, again, the volume of, of the closed sales, we're seeing that, that we basically are up, $5.36 million have been closed. We look at the average listing price, which that's a linear line there, and you actually get to see that the current year is higher than the prior year. We also look again at the average list price per square foot, and when we look at this, this one we have a little bit of a challenge with because if there's acreage involved, that has a value, but we don't see that reflected. All we see is, we see the price of the property and how many square feet there is in conditioned space. So that can throw things off a little bit. But actually, again, because of the reduced properties available, the price is going up. It's starting to become a seller's market. The properties are appraising, and that's huge. That took years to come back from when we had the recession. And one of the challenges was we didn't have buyers. And so when we didn't have buyers, Realtors kept dropping the price, dropping the price. Well, somebody would finally buy it and get it at a really great price. So now that sets a baseline. Now you get somebody coming in willing to pay more for a house, but it won't appraise. So now the price has to drop. So this again, we always need to look at the big picture. The big picture's looking really good for us right now as far as what's going on with our market and what's going on with the housing stock that we have. We don't have people that really want to move. Those that are moving, again, are the standard reasons, to go be with their grandchildren or because they have health care issues. A lot of them that can't be at this elevation or need, and I want to say major health care. It's not that our hospital can't handle it or our doctors, it's that they've gotten to a point that they need to be, a lot of times, in more of a progressive care situation. So when we look at the market data report, and this is actually, actually page three of 12, we look at the active listings. That's where you see in that bar chart for June and May and April and March, that we have fewer homes on the market than we did last year. And that's, that's where we're seeing the demand. The other that may be hard for you to see, I'm not sure if Ann was able to print this out in color, if you could pull it up to where you can see it, but is the diversity in the type of properties that are selling. One of the other things that we're seeing, and I think I may have mentioned it at the last meeting, but I really want to stress this now, is we have a challenge because a lot of the homes that are being sold now, we've got investors, and they're purchasing those, and they're purchasing those to be Airbnbs. And we've got other homes that are being purchased that have been rentals that are now being purchased to be lived in. So from a property management standpoint, it's a very, very tight market. You try to go out and find something to rent on a month-to-month basis or to actually rent for a year, and I'll tell you, it is a tight, tight market. So that's one of our challenges as well. The investors that I work with, I'm actually trying to get them to purchase homes and then turn them into long-term rentals because that's really where the need is. It's a good market. The other one that's really good to see is the page that has distressed listings. And we can see that's dropped off immensely. We really lagged behind the country as far as our distressed properties, and that continues to go down. One of the challenges in this is somebody wants to buy a distressed property, they need to have money upfront because a lot of these are sitting with banks, asset management groups, they will not pay to turn utilities on. If somebody's going to try to get a mortgage, they need to have an appraisal, all the utilities need to be on. So we're finding most of the depressed properties are tending to be picked up again by investors. Silver City is a market people have heard about. They're looking at it. We're getting more activity downtown, so we're all very, very positive. We're getting many new, young Realtors. So we don't look at them, I don't look at them as competition. We all work together, we're all working on the multiple listing service, but people are realizing this is a very, very good profession. And we are very, I feel very proud of the honesty of the people that we have working here in our area. The last thing I wanted to mention is actually kind of a combination of things, and that is I'm working with the commons to come up with a neighborhood map. And they are going out as they start harvesting fruit and things of that nature, and they're trying to create where people feel ownership in their culture and in their area. And so I'll be coming to each of you to talk to you about what do you, what do you call this neighborhood? Because from a real estate standpoint, a lot of times, I'll just call it by the subdivision name, and I know people don't call it by that. But I think it's really great that we have this community interest, and again, we can, we can have our territorial days, and we can have other ways that we're building communities and neighborhoods and coming up with a common name for those areas and a unity amongst the people. Are there any questions at all?
Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. Could you please explain specifically what a distressed property is?
Well, that's a catch-all that we use, if it's a foreclosed property, if it's a short sale. Let me explain what a short sale is, and we've had very, very few of those recently. Those were happening right when we started having the recession. And it was where you had a homeowner that wanted to sell the property for less than they owed on the property. And it's a Dickens of a thing to try to close because you've not only got the homeowner who is, has to speak with their lender, but then you've also got the lender involved. And so it's a real communication challenge to try to get these processed through. It takes months. So, but any foreclosed property immediately goes in as a distressed property.
Okay.
All right, now, the other thing is, a distressed property cannot be used for an appraised comparison on a regular property that's for sale. So a lot of times, people feel, oh my gosh, you know, neighborhood's going downhill, we just had this property foreclosed. It's not going to affect the value of the other homes that are on the market. Those will be compared to non-distressed properties when they sell.
Thank you. That's a good explanation. Appreciate that. And I have one more brief question. And I just, you just described that there are a number of what you call the investors trying to buy property, and we've had actually some difficulties in the town with people who have invested who are not actually planning to live anywhere near the town. What's your take on that?
Well, luckily, the mayor's met quite a few people that I'm working with, and the investors I'm working with are not only, they've actually bought property to live in here, and now they want to contribute in helping to rebuild our downtown or rebuild other areas. So the ones I'm working with are not what I would consider absentee landlords. They are going to be living locally here, and they're going to be citizens of Silver City and Grant County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you.
Next item is staff reports. Mr. Brown.
Mayor, Council. As Councilor Amen Smith mentioned earlier, the town is going to have the, is going to close Georgia Street from Highway 180 to 13th Street on August 4th from 10 to 2 o'clock for the event, the territorial charter event. Originally, when we started looking at closing down the street, we found that we had an ordinance that you couldn't play ball or play in the street. And I believe that ordinance was passed back in 1962, 63? So we were worried that, how are we going to close the street to do the Play Street? Well, we worked with Robert, our attorney, and found that we had, realized that we had adopted the Uniform Traffic Code since, and so the Uniform Traffic Code gave us some relief and allows us to close the street for the, to have the event. And so I talked with the chief, and he's agreed to close this, close the street for the event, so it's going to go forward. And it was just a little bit interesting to, to realize that we have an ordinance that you can't play in the street. So it was a little bit funny. Next, we talked about, a few months ago, about the lease at the Washington Federal Building being up in two years and, and the opportunity to look at a reuse of that property sometime, but it was going to take, take some time to, to look at it. I talked with the bank after that meeting, and they have submitted a request to extend the lease for an additional two years. So we will be bringing that lease to, at least NOI, because we have to go through the NOI process because it's over $100,000. So we'll be bringing that back to you on the first council meeting in August. Okay? And that's all I have right now.
Any, any questions for Mr. Brown? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business under 10A, which is the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number 1270, an ordinance adopting the establishment of the Agmactronic LLC Manufacturing Facility as an economic development project within and for the town of Silver City pursuant to Section 5-10-2B NMSA 1978, Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. I think Councilor Ray is a sponsor of this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned before, Mr. Hebron gave me a tour of his place, and it was very interesting to see the whole, the whole work. And with this, with this ordinance here, where he's going to move, it's going to be very, very well. And I, and I'm glad that they chose Silver City to start the project. It would be a great place for economic development, and hopefully that the property and your, your, ah, I'm lost for words. I can say in Spanish, but I can't say it in English, and I'm sorry. Que te vaya bien. Hopefully, hopefully that you will do well in your business and your great endeavor here. I appreciate that. And we, as a town council and we, as a Silver City residents, are glad that you chose Silver City to do this place here. And with that, I looked at this, at this paperwork here, and it all seems to be all in, in order. Mr. Fisher, you're making me, you're making me nervous. No, no. No, I'm just kidding you. But anyway, I move to approve an ordinance, number 1270, an ordinance adopting the establishment of the Agmactronic LLC Manufacturing Facility as an economic development project within and for the town of Silver City pursuant to Section 5-10-2B NMSA in 1978, Local Economic Development Act, and Section 16-21A of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Connor.
I'll second the motion as stated.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I would like to do a roll call on this. Please, Ann.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Amen Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is new business, under new business 11A, which is the approval slash disapproval of a contract agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Southwest Waste Authority. Mr. Brown?
This is a renewal of the contract between the town and the Solid Waste Authority for the collection and processing of the recycling that we send down there. The town is wholly responsible for the recycling program down at the Solid Waste Authority, and basically, the way that, that the operation works, for the contract anyway, we come up with a budget of what it's going to cost to operate the program, and then we get credit for all the sale of recyclable materials. And then the remainder of the balance is, is the town's contract to recycle. So that way, there's no burden placed on the authority for recycling. As everybody knows, the recycling is not doing so well anymore, but because we want to continue to work through this process, we're, we're still continuing to work to find additional vendors and, and, you know, the single street thing that we just are doing right now, it's, it's not a definite program, but we're working to get through it. This contract is actually $72,000, $74,000 more than it was last year, and that's because when we put the budget together, the collection part of the, originally, we did not anticipate, we did not plan for the Solid Waste Authority to collect any, do any more collection. But because of our, our small streets downtown, our narrow streets, our big trucks couldn't get through there, so we had to work with the, they actually ate the cost last year to do the collection process downtown. So with that, this, this contract is a two-year contract that includes the actual collection process for the downtown streets that, that the Solid Waste Authority does. So any questions?
Councilor Edison.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand from Section 2 of the term of the agreement that this will be, contract will be reevaluated in 12 months.
Yes, yes, ma'am. It's going to be reevaluated every 12 months, so if, if, well, let me explain, there's a whole lot of things going on.
Because I just, yeah, a little explanation, Mr. Brown, if you could, about the fact that right now, we only have a potential contract with that right now, we only have a potential contract with Fremont for six months.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As you know, I am the chair of the Solid Waste Authority. So I'm back actually evaluating it every month. So this is just a requirement that we evaluate every 12 months. But I've had some conversations with Sarah Pierpoint from the New Mexico Recycling Coalition, and we're working with her to submit for USDA grant with all of the recycling facilities in southern New Mexico, to try to create a hub out of Las Cruces so that, because originally, when the recycling program started, right before we started doing single stream, we had the state actually set up a co-op. And the state recycling community, basically, they went out and looked for buyers of plastic or paper or cardboard. They did all that for us. And then we just sent it out to the different, sold it to the different organizations. Well, we don't have that anymore. What the grant is for is actually to try to reset, set something up like that again so that we can try and find businesses that will use the recyclable materials in, in America or in Mexico, wherever it might be, somewhere close, because we have smaller volumes. So we're looking at that. We're also looking at trying to get, set up a program so that we can work with businesses that may be able to start working and maybe wanting to venture out into using recyclable materials and helping them getting the resources so they can start up or expand or whatever it might be. So we're starting this planning process. I just submitted the letter of support today. So we're doing a whole lot of things to try to continue recycling, even though there's not a whole lot out there right now. But we're, we're trying really hard to, to keep it going.
So one more question, Mr. Mayor. So in part of doing this, is the town, as suggested, I think a couple of weeks ago or maybe before that, are we going to consider putting more information about, about making sure that your recyclables are clean before you put them in? You know, sort of an education program about, you know, which ones we're going to, we will take, you know, of certain plastics? You know, if that, if, you know, I, I asked that question because I noticed that when I clicked on a, on an article in the Santa Fe New Mexican, what actually came up was, this is accepted, this is accepted, and then they had those symbols, and then they said, clean only. And so they're, you know, they've, they've started that process, and that was not something that came up before if you click an online article on the New Mexican.
Well, what, since the last council meeting, our website, we, we've been trying to update it, first of all, to what we're actually accepting. And then the, the printed print media and radio media that we, we worked on last week was, I mean, since the last council meeting, was just to make sure that people knew we were still collecting single stream first. That was the main focus, to make sure that people knew we were still collecting it. And then we will continue working on a more concerted effort to get people to learn about cleaning up the plastics and all those things. So we will continue to do that. But we just wanted, because of all the confusion in the last month or so, we just wanted to make sure that people knew that they could continue to collect, recycle the single stream.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Any questions from the general public?
Mr. Mayor? Mayor? Sissy Hasar.
Sissy?
I was just wondering if we still have a recycling committee or not. I know it used to be one of the mayor's committees.
There, there is no membership. Nobody's on the committee right now.
Well.
But it's still there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I hear a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Council Ray?
I move to approve of a contract agreement between the town of Silver City and the Southwest Solid Waste Authority.
Do I hear a second? Council Connaught?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion as stated.
A motion second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, name? Motion carries.
The authority has already approved this, so we've got both sides approved.
Next item is 11B, the approval/disapproval of request for proposal number 17/18-5P Marketing Services. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, as you know, through this tourism coordinator project that we've been going over the last year, we've identified that it would be better for us to go to a marketing firm to do the marketing for all of the tourist activities and the destination marketing for the town of Silver City. We did put a, a section in the contract, in the RFP, so that the county can piggyback off of this RFP if they so choose. And so with that, we've, we received three RFPs, with one from Griffin Associates out of Albuquerque, SkyWest Media out of Silver City, and the Gary Group LLC out of Albuquerque. The review committee recommended to award the RFP 17/18-5P Marketing Services to Griffin and Associates out of Albuquerque.
Any questions? Council Bass?
Can you review for the public some of the things that this company, if approved, will be doing for us? Is that possible?
Yes, they will be working with all of the, the event, the events that we usually award tourism dollars to, to do all their marketing for, for their events. And then they will also be doing the destination marketing, which is the marketing of Silver City, the region, throughout the entire year. So they've got the, they're actually an approved vendor through the New Mexico True Program. They do, they are the marketing firms for Sierra County. So they are doing it in New Mexico, they're, well, they're doing it in New Mexico. The resources that they have are very, they've got a lot of background in social media, print media, all those types of things. And, you know, the social media is one of those that, that not all the firms have. But it's, we've realized through the last year of information that we've been gathering that, that it's very important. And they've got, they've got a lot of good references, and we've talked to them, and the budget that we have for the project works well within what they're, they think that we, they'll need to do.
Any other questions? Council Connaught?
When this takes over with the advertising, are you going to have some sort of a final say about what they produce?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Council Bass?
And do they come and report to the council?
Yes, I'll make sure that we get a report first. Come and have them introduce themselves first. We've got, once you're ready, we're going to sit down and negotiate with them and get a final plan for this next year. And then after that, I'll have them come and do a, a report to you on what we've come up with. And then we'll ask them to come and do some quarterly reports on the data that they've gathered, because, you know, especially with the social media and internet and all that stuff, you can gather that information on what the results of, they're seeing from that. Not so much with the print media. But yes, we will have them come do reports.
So I, I would just like to recommend that when they come to introduce themselves, they probably already have some ideas. It'd be nice to hear some of those ideas.
Yeah, we're going to do all the negotiations and everything before, before they come to you.
So, so right, when they come here, though, it'd be kind of great to see what they kind of envision, not that they're going to have completed things, but at least they might have a vision of what they, they think they're going to do. And I think that that would be something that public and our lodgers would really appreciate, knowing, you know, that it's, it's.
You know, James was actually on the, the committee, so.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, to that, to that point, I spoke with them, and we asked them to clarify their budget a little bit. And she made it abundantly clear that what she could provide at this point was a very broad, rough budget, because she would like to come down here and develop a plan with the community and the town in, to better refine the budget and, and what we want as to market Silver City.
So this sounds like they are going to want to hold some community meetings, which is a, is a good thing, or something to try to get, you know, or, you know, to go to different groups. And I think that that's, that's what I was kind of asking, is, you know, kind of what their plans are. And if this is awarded, when, when do they, when do you start the negotiations right away to get them on board since we're already into the new fiscal year?
Yes, we'll start right away.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Council?
A quick comment.
Council Bass?
Just a quick comment. So, Mr. Marshall, you were part of the review meeting, and understanding that part of the background or part of the review should have been always references and looking at the portfolio of work that people have done, similar kinds of things? Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this particular firm, I was interested, of course, when I read the packet, to see what it was that they had done, as well as the other competing firms. So I just want to say that I was impressed with their statements about being community-oriented and philanthropic, and that they have won a number of awards for social media. Interesting.
Any other questions, comments, general public? Do I hear a motion? Council Connaught?
Request for proposal number 17/18-5P Marketing Services per stock recommendation ordered to Griffin and Associates, 119 Dartmouth Drive, Southeast Albuquerque, Mexico, 87106.
Thank you. Second, Council Ray?
I'll second as it is, sir.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Motion carries. The next item is 11C, the approval/disapproval of resolution number 2018-17, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, this is the final budget adjustment for fiscal year 2018. It's, it's a little bit complicated, because the easy parts are the additions, the new grants that we receive through the year. Those were added through this process. But like we've talked about for the last year, is we had to do those temporary transfers. So we've done temporary transfers from some of the capital funds that grants, where we've spent the money and we're waiting for reimbursement. So we actually have a negative balance in the fund, waiting for the reimbursement. But the state will not accept a final quarterly report without, with negative balances, even though they're the cause of the negative balance. So it, I feel bad doing this, because it's really, it doesn't paint a true picture of what's, what's really happening. But this has all the temporary transfers to cover those negative balances on those negative, on those capital funds, because it's, most of them are all the grants, like College Street, you know, the DOT projects, all those things. So that's what we have in here. Do you have any questions on anything? Because you can ask Anita, because I can't see this.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
Mayor?
Council Bass?
I move to approve of resolution number 2018-17, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2018, and for municipal purpose in the town of Silver City, New Mexico, transferring and appropriating funds thereof.
Is there a second? Council Allen Smith?
I have a second motion as stated.
And for motion and second, any discussion? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Council Bass?
Aye.
Council Allen Smith?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is our agenda item 11D, the approval/disapproval of resolution number 2018-18, final quarter financial report year ending June 30, 2018. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, this is the final quarterly report that we have to submit to the, to DFA for your approval. I don't want to say these are the, I'm not going to say these are the true numbers, because they made us do the temporary transfers to make these numbers work. The true numbers are the beginning cash balances that you're going to see in the, in the final budget that we're going to do next. But these are all the, as accurate as you can get. The bottom line is, we're in a very good place.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Council Bass?
I move to approve of resolution number 2018-18, final quarter financial report year ending June 30, 2018.
Is there a second? Council Bass?
It says 2018. It says 2018. We're on D. Mr. Mayor, I have a second motion as stated.
Marshall, second, any discussion? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Council Bass?
Aye.
Council Allen Smith?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is item 11E, the approval/disapproval of resolution number 2018-19, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, council, this is the final budget for fiscal year 2019, with the correct beginning balances. And as you'll see, all of the funds are, we're in good shape. The general fund, we've got substantial, we've got about, well, we've got about, we're required to keep a 1/12 reserve. Right now, we've got about a, we've got more than that. We've got about $225,000 more than the 1/12 required. And that includes all the increases for the unions and everything that, that have been budgeted. We haven't brought the fire union's contract, because they finally sent us the final agreement yesterday. And so, but their increases are included in the budget already. So we're not going to have to do anything to include that here. So all of that's in here. As you can see, at the end of the year, the water sewer fund, the sanitation fund, the lodges tax, the lodges tax, we've got $88,000 extra, so we've been very conservative because of this transition year with the marketing firm. I wanted to make sure I had enough extra funds available so we, if anything pops up. And with, this also includes the decrease in the sewer rate for out-of-town residents that I, I mentioned a few council meetings back. The sanitation fund has the nice increase in the landfill rates to cover the tipping fees for the single stream recycling. And with that, do you have any questions?
Do I hear a motion? Council Bass?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of resolution number 2018-19, approval and adoption of the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018, through June 30, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second? Council Allen Smith?
Council Ray.
Council Ray, go ahead.
I'll second as it is stated.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, ma'am.
Council Bass?
Aye.
Council Allen Smith?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Aye.
Council Connaught?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. The last agenda item is the approval slash disapproval of the selection of a voting delegate and alternate to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League's Annual Conference. I am scheduled to attend and so is Mayor Protem Vetterson. Are there any other council members that plan to attend? Do I hear a motion then?
Mr. Mayor?
Council Aman Smith?
I move to approve the selection of our voting delegate of Mayor Ken Rider and the alternate to vote of Count, uh, Mayor Protem Cynthia Vetterson to vote at the New Mexico Municipal League's Annual Conference.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Council Connaught?
I'll second that motion as stated.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries.
During the budget presentation, I wanna make sure that everybody recognizes that Anita does 90% of the, this work for the budget. I give her the numbers and she just makes sure they're right. So, I just wanna thank her for all the work she's done on that.
Thank you, Anita. I would like to, uh, I would like to thank Police Chief Portillo for being here tonight. Thank you, Chief. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion? Council Aman Smith? You have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second this.
Council Ray? Seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay. We are adjourned.